Thank you, so good evening everyone and welcome to Luzerne County Community College. My name is Susan Spry and I'm the Vice President of Workforce and Community Development here at the college. Our President, Tom Leary, is at a conference, so he's out of the area and I'm standing in for him. Tom is well aware though that we are holding this event this evening and he extends his welcome to our sponsor, the League of Women Voters, to those of you in the audience, and to our candidates who've joined us here this evening. As a community college, we're always happy to host these kinds of events where our voting public and community can get to learn some more about issues that we care about. Dr. Chris Sheridan, Chris is the Vice President of the Board of Directors of the League of Women Voters of the Wilkes-Barre area.
Good evening. On behalf of the League, I'd like to welcome candidates and all of you in the audience to this forum. I'd like to also express our gratitude to the Vice President of LCC, Susan Spry, and to the President, Tom Leary, for helping us put this forum together, for hosting us, and for helping us plan it. As many of you already know, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. Our mission is very, very simple. We want to encourage as many people as possible to get out to vote as a means of registering their opinion with our elected officials and having a voice in government. We've arranged this forum tonight so that you can get to know the county council candidates in their positions on topics that can very well affect your quality of life. During the course of the evening, you will see a board member circulating up and down the aisles. She has index cards and pencils. So if there is a question that you would like to ask tonight, just raise your hand, we'll give you an index card, write out your question. Be sure the question is not directed at a particular candidate. It must be directed at the entire panel. We'll collect those questions and give them to our moderator tonight, and the moderator will ask those questions. Please submit only one question per index card. The forum will end at 8:30. If you have any additional questions, or if you've tried to submit a question and that question was not answered, please see the candidates individually afterward. We'll ask them to stay for a few minutes to answer any questions that you would like to ask them that were not addressed tonight. Now, just to review, there are 12 candidates running for six open seats. Eight of those 12 candidates, I'm doing a quick count, nine of those 12 candidates agreed to be here tonight so that you could get to know them and ask questions that you might have. Tonight, each candidate will give a minute and a half introduction. The candidate will then respond to the questions that have been prepared by the League, and they will also respond to any questions that you submit on those index cards, again, time permitting. Each candidate will then be given a minute and a half to do some closing remarks. I want to bring the attention of the candidates to our timekeepers who are sitting right there in the second row. They will be timing your responses. Again, you'll have a minute and a half to respond, and they will give you warning signs as to how many seconds you have left. If you have a cellphone on you and you have not turned it to the vibrator, please do so now. If we ask that you hold any applause till the end of the forum, we also ask that you do not hold any signs or campaign literature during this forum. And because we are a nonpartisan organization, the candidates are asked not to use the League name or anything from this forum in campaign ads or for campaign purposes. I want to bring your attention to the fact that this forum is being taped and will be aired by Service Electric on Channel 2 on Monday, October 19th at 8:00 p.m. Also, the League's Voters Guide will appear in Citizens Voice on Monday, November 2nd. The League will also be hosting another forum for the candidates for Luzerne County District Attorney. That forum will be held on October 29th at Wyoming Seminary's Buckingham Performing Arts Center, and we invite you all to attend that. Now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our moderator for tonight's forum, Mr. Andy Mahalchuk of WBRE-TV. Andy is the Lead Reporter at WBRE-TV. He's been at the station since 1985. He's a graduate of Hazelton High School in Wilkes-Abraham, where he received a degree in Political Science, so how appropriate that he would be moderating tonight's event. He's received numerous awards for his reporting, including the prestigious AP Award. He, his wife Mary, and their daughter Jacqueline live in Hazelton, where he was born and raised. And thank you very much for agreeing.
Thank you, Chris. Honored and glad to be here with everybody here tonight. We wish you all the candidates well as we move forward. And those who came here tonight, I think it would be a very informative evening. Quite honestly, I wish we had this room packed, jammed up. I think we all agree with that. But nonetheless, we get the information out there and hopefully the voters will tap in, watch what be broadcast of this, watch what we get in the newspapers and on our broadcast, Eye Witness News, to better inform the public of what's going on in Luzerne County. So again, good to be with all of you, good to see some longtime acquaintances and friends and many interview, I think I've interviewed everybody here at one time or another for a story. Good, bad rugby, interviewed with all, so good luck tonight. Let's start off with the, Andy, the candidates drew numbers to be in order of how they're going to give an opening statement and then answer the questions. So let's start with an opening statement and introduce yourself with Tim McGinnley.
Good evening. Nice to be here tonight. Thank you for coming out. I know the weather's starting to change a little bit, but I appreciate the fact that we have somewhat of an audience tonight here with us. I just want to give a little brief summary of where I'm at at this point. I'm currently an elected member of Luzerne County Council. I am a graduate of Wilkes College, which Andy should like. I was graduated from Kingston High School way back when Kingston High School was still part of Kingston and Zell. I've gone to graduate school at the University of Scranton, Lehigh University, Temple University, Penn State. So I've had a varied educational career as far as graduate work and participating in different programs. I was formerly an educator over 30 years, served as a teacher, coach, athletic director, principal. I've all that up with a career at the Commission on Economic Opportunity, which is a private nonprofit in this community that serves all of Luzerne County, Wyoming County, Susquehanna County, and Lackawanna. This has brought me to this point where I think at this time, because of my experience, because of my time as a council member, I bring a very sound bank of knowledge and experience to the council, and I wish to continue at that point. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McGinnley, thank you very much. Next up, Mark Dixon.
Good evening. My name is Mark Dixon. I'm an 11-year resident of Mountain Top, Pennsylvania, obviously. I live there with my wife and two daughters. I am the Director of Business Development for Kodak Alaris. I've been doing that for about 11 years. Been with the company for, I guess, over 20 now. I oversee about 50 counts worldwide, mainly in North and South America, with a total revenue of over $30 million annually. So I hope that that experience will apply or help me in county council. This is my first run at any office, but I do believe that the hard work ethic that I have and the proven track record in the business world will apply. I'm also a volunteer for Upstate Bello on the Board of Directors, which is a bike advocacy group here in northeastern Pennsylvania, where we promote bike safety, try to promote more people getting out on their site, or their bicycles, and the health benefits that that can have long-term. I'm happy to be here this evening and look forward to hearing what everyone else has to say from the candidates and hear their ideas and thoughts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Up next, Gene Kellerer.
Thank you. Thanks to those that are here. My name is Eugene Kellerer. I'm a resident of the Back Mountain. I was a math teacher for 35 years at Wyoming Valley West High School. I then retired and went into business and was involved in financial services and invested people's money. I was a coach at the high school level in sports. I was a Sunday School teacher, a Sunday School Superintendent, Little League Coach, Little League Commissioner. I've had a lot of experience dealing with people in a voluntary system. I look forward to working with the council and dealing with issues so that we can help solve problems. We're heading into a time where the revenues are going to exceed, the revenues are not going to exceed the expenses. The expenses are going to be about 8.2 or 8.4 million as projected by PFM by 2019. We have problems we need to solve, we have tough decisions to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellerer. Now we hear from Mark Raabo.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League and LCC for having us here today and all the people in the audience that showed up. My name is Mark Raabo. I'm born and raised in Hazelton, Pennsylvania. Graduated one of the second graduating classes of the Hazelton Area High School. I entered, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps upon graduation. I, after that, I attended Shiller International University in London, England. Majored in International Business, minored in International Relations and Diplomacy. And upon coming back from college, I came back to the area because my father was, you know, ill and eventually passed, but I took care of my family, my mom, and my siblings, so I stayed in the area. Had been working, I worked our jobs, and then I started my own business, construction business, and I've been doing that ever since. I served on the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority. I was appointed last year, resigned in May. And my passion's always been for blighted properties, and I hope that we can get development in our residential areas so that way we would actually stimulate growth and bring in new growth into the area economics. So I look forward to hearing from everybody and have a spirited discussion. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raabo. Up next, Ray Gustav.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to see you all here. My name is Ray Gustav. I'm originally from Wilkes-Barre. I now live in West Wyoming. I'm a graduate of Cofflin High School and Wilkes College. I also took accounting courses at Delaware Valley College, and I took contract law courses at the George Washington University School of Law. I am an U.S. Air Force Vietnam Veteran. I served four years as an air traffic controller. I retired from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. At the NRC, I was a contracting officer, and then I moved into budget, where I was responsible for formulation and execution of the research portion of the NRC's budget submission to Congress. In the budget formulation area, when I started in that job, the budget was $160 million. When I retired, it was around $85 million, so I know how to cut budgets. Why am I running for council? I think it's important to get involved, to express your opinion. But moreover, I routinely speak at county council meetings, the council politely listens. They rarely take my comments into consideration, and what I would like to see, or, excuse me, the reason I'm running is because I figured in order to get anything meaningful accomplished, I need a seat at the table. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gustav, thank you. Candidate Steve Urban.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen J. Urban, and I'd like to thank the League and LCC for hosting this this evening, and thank the members of the audience for being out there, and thank the viewers that are going to be watching this. Been a lifelong resident of Wilkes-Barre. I've attended Penn State and actually here at LCC years ago. Currently, I'm an IT Support Coordinator for a major food distribution company. We do over $22 billion in revenue every year. I'm an avid hunter, pro-gun individual, pro-life individual. Have a very expressed interest in county council as a current elected member of council. I'm asking for everybody's vote and support because I think we are going down a fiscal path that needs to be changed, where I am going to echo that expenses are exceeding revenues. I think, you know, I'm a member on council that's for the taxpayer to protect a taxpayer's interest. I voted to keep the homestand exemption in place. Also, voted to keep the elected tax collectors. I think you need somebody to actually watch what's going on within local government because I think local government has an insatiable appetite to take taxpayers' money and use it unwisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Now Jane Walsh-Watkins.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the League for inviting us tonight, and thank you to the community college for hosting us. My name is Jane Walsh-Watkins, and I'm a candidate for county council. I live in Mountain Top, Pennsylvania, with my husband Frank. I have three children, four very, very active grandchildren. I believe in community service. That's why I'm running for county council. I'm a former, actually, resident of Laughlin, Pennsylvania, where I was urged to run for the supervisor's position. I was elected and eventually became president of Laughlin Borough Council. I enjoyed it tremendously. When I moved to Mountain Top, I looked around for other volunteer responsibilities, and I found them. In the meantime, I have been working at Luzerne, at Luzerne County Community College, left about 15 years ago for Penn State Hazelton, where I'm a member of the English Department, and I manage the First Year Experience Program. I enjoy those tremendously, and I'm looking to now get more involved at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Watkins. Robert Schneaton.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for their invitation tonight. I was born and raised in the Hazelton area. I had the privilege of having two of the best parents. They came from humble means. My mother worked in the garment industry, my father worked at Tentacle for steelworkers. They didn't make much money, but they worked very hard. They worked very hard, so I know what it is each week to put bread and butter on the table. But what they didn't have in money, they had in love at the kitchen table each night when we sat down that you could never be replaced. I'm a graduate of Hazelton High School. Currently, I've been working the last 26 years at Hazelton City Water Authority. Civically, I've been involved coaching in the Police Athletic League, basketball in Hazelton, Ernie Valant Midget Football, Hazel Township Little League. I was assistant football coach at the high school level under a great man in Richie Max. I was also a PIAA basketball official. When I was younger, had the privilege of playing with a bunch of great guys. We were Little League State Champions in 1971, Pennsylvania Little League State Champions, and also Babe Ruth State Champions as 13-year-olds. Also, served on the Hazelton Area School Board from '93 to '99, and it was a great privilege that the voters at that time put their trust. And when you go to the voting booth for somebody that puts their trust in you, that's a very humbling experience. And last but not least, I'm the president of the United Steel Workers, and I represent 630 people, and I fight for peoples that live week to week for their rights to work because whether you're union or non-union, people were under attack. I'm one of those fighters that'll fight for the common, for the common working man. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schnee. And finally, Stephen A. Urban.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Andy, and the League of Women Voters for inviting me to participate in this, and I want to ask the voters for your vote on November 3rd of this year. I think it's important that we ask the voters for their support, and I want to ask you for that support. I was born and raised in the Wilkes-Barre area, went to St. Boniface for eight years and graduated from there, and then I went to Myers High School and graduated from Myers. A week after graduating from college, I entered the Army as a private, spent five years in the Army as an enlisted person, spent a year in Vietnam, came out of the Army, graduated from King's College, went to Army Reserve Officer Training Corps at University of Scranton, was designated a distinguished military graduate, was commissioned as a regular Army officer, a second lieutenant. I spent an additional 19 years on active duty in the military, moved 17 times. I'm a Gulf War veteran, served in Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, and Iraq. My last assignment in the United States Army was with the Office of Foreign and Intelligence and the Deputy Chief of Staff for Intelligence at the Pentagon. I've been on county commissioner for 12 years. I believe I'm noted for my honesty, and I've been on county council for four years, and I continue to fight for the people of this county. That is what I'm here for, to fight for the people and to make this county a better place. I deeply care about the people of this county, and again, I want to ask you for your vote and support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. We'll start with question number one, and Mr. Mark Dixon will answer first, and we'll go down the line. The question is, what would be your top priority if elected?
Well, there's a lot of priorities, I think, there, but thank you, Andy. You know, one of the big things that I see for Luzerne County is quality of life, and I think that if we can work on quality of life and improve things overall, I think that gives us the opportunity to go out and seek, you know, more people to move to the area. I think if you improve that, you know, you can encourage more business in the area, which in turn would be more tax revenue for everyone. I think that one of the challenges that we see is every time that there's a shortfall, it's always, you know, the thought of raising taxes. Well, I'd love to do some out-of-the-box thinking and see what else we can do to increase that tax base and more people in the area. So those are one of the things that I would really like to see. I'm very passionate about the recreation that's available here, and I think that that's something that we could also work to promote and get more people to come to Luzerne County.
Okay, thank you. The same question from Mr. Kellerer. What would be your top priority if elected?
Top priority is being watchdog for the budget. We're going to, as I stated before, enter a period where by 2019, the expenses are going to exceed the revenue as reported by the Pennsylvania Financial Management Team. And they have a 253-page report out, which I'm going to spend some time reading. How you make up $8.4 million, and the last few years, it seems that management has run the county in a way where you're $16 million behind already. There are ways that we can address saving money, and they are suggested in an article in the paper, which is a condensed version of the PFM report. So I think we need to work together to look, first of all, how we can save money, because if we're going to have more expenditures than revenue coming in, there's only two ways we can save that, make the budget balance. Either increasing taxes, which I, as a 71-year-old guy, doesn't want to see happen, or trying to save money by looking for savings opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mark Raabo, what would be your top priority if elected? Same question.
My top priority would be economic development and also the taking care of the debt. Those are hand in hand. You cannot have one without the other. If you're going to have, take care of the debt, you're either going to have to do it by either raising taxes or by, you know, cutting staff, which at the previous county council meeting, we can't afford to cut anymore. If there's going to be cut staff, there's, it's just going to be intangible. So I think what needs to happen is we need to find ways to raise revenue without raising the taxes by getting allocations as far as the money that was, that should have been paid to the county, such as the TIF, which I helped get that money for, and also other programs through economic development, through redevelopment, through the ancillary agencies that the county has. And also, the fact is that the money, the expenditures we have as far as the jail and the judicial, the prison and the judicial services are two of the main areas that cost the county, keep costing the county more than it takes, and so I think those two areas are important to focus on. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Raabo, thank you. Now Ray Gustav, again, same question. What would be your top priority if elected?
My top priority if I got, if I were to be elected is to get spending under control. The county does not have a revenue problem, it's got a spending problem. Part of that spending problem is the county debt. Almost 25% of the taxes that are collected every year goes to pay debt service. When you have to take 25% of your budget off the top just to pay for past borrowing, that creates a huge problem in funding your necessary services. Mr. Congressman Prashinsky stated at the last council meeting that he is introducing legislation to enact a 2% room tax, which would go exclusively for debt service. I wholeheartedly agree with that. I believe that we need to identify other sources of income other than property taxes so that we could have out-of-state, out-of-area residents help us pay down the debt. Excuse me. As far as the paying down the debt and reducing expenditures, I think we've got to look at all of the big-ticket items, budget items that the county has, go over them with a fine-toothed comb, as well as conduct a top-to-bottom review of all county expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gustav. Steve Urban, same question. What would be your top priority if elected?
I think at this point, my top priority is to actually replace the current executive leader in the county, because good leadership is what we truly need within the county. I think a lot of the other problems are systemic because of the lack of leadership in the current executive that we have sitting in at the county. I was a proponent of having him terminated a while back. I think some of my colleagues currently are starting to see that that change is sorely needed or is going to be needed very soon. I think, you know, the debt and all of the financial issues stem from the leader within the county. That particular individual has a job to do every single day. We're there to check him as county council and really ask the tough questions, but he does keep us in the dark most of the time. He does not communicate well with us, or at least half of us. He may communicate well with some of us, but I surely haven't gotten a lot of the information that I've asked for in the past or in the present. Quite honestly, we know we have a $16.9 million structural deficit at this point in time. I've asked numerous occasions what comprises that debt, what makes it up, who do we owe that money to, what are the details of that debt, and I have yet to get those answers. So, you know, I think, you know, a lot of these priorities right now stem So, you know, I think, you know, a lot of these priorities right now stem from one person and one person only, and that is to replace that county manager.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Urban. Jane Walsh Wakus, same question. What would be your top priority if elected?
Well, my top priority, aside from finding a way to get a handle on the debt and finding a way to increase revenues in the county, I think Representative Piszczynski's idea of the two-percent tax is a wonderful one. I think that would help us tremendously. But going hand-in-hand with that, I think it's, I think it's very important for members of county council to actually get along and work as a team, and I would work very, very hard to build bridges with my fellow council members.
Okay, Robert Schnee, same question. Your top priority.
One of my top priorities, not that I would put that in the top of the order, I mean, we have a one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-million-dollar budget. Fixed costs on that budget's probably like around eighty-four, eighty-five percent. That's salaries, pension, health cares for the workers that are there. In that area, there's going to be hard decisions to be made, and as a working person and represent the working people, before, I will not take anybody's job off of them. If there's retirements, and I'll talk to management and also talk to people in the rank and file. Custodian's opinion means as much to me as some judges. That's what I'm bringing to the table there. There's going to be some tough decisions to be made there. On crime, I think some of the issues with the charter restrict you from being involved. I mean, I think people are crying out that they need help. They're afraid to leave their houses in the city of Wilkes-Barre and Hazelton. One of my thoughts were, and I know we'd have to appeal to the state, would be for the gaming money, for X amount of money to go to law enforcement officials. And the perfect example was Catherine Kane when she first started her group. They came into Hazelton and they cleaned it right up, and then when they were leaving...
We'll have to stop, Mr. Schnee. I'm sorry about that. We have a time limit there.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Stephen A. Urban, your top priority if elected?
My top priority, if I'm elected, is to restore accountability in the county. Number one, the current majority on council is not accountable to the people of this county. The current majority on council has let the manager spend sixteen-point-nine-million-dollar more than was approved in budgets over the last three years. The debt is one thing. We have a handle on the debt. We know what the annual debt payments are every year. We know what they are. But what we have is a spending problem with the manager in place. The manager who was hired had no experience. He worked for a board of supervisors who were similar to a board of commissioners. He did not run the county for two years up in Calaveras in California. He did not run that. We need accountability. We have members on council that refused to terminate his employment. Let him spend more on an annual basis than they approve in a budget. That is not wrong. That is wrong. You know, Mr. McGinley has yet to stand up and say, "I want to vote to terminate the manager because he's spent sixteen-point-nine-million-dollar more than I approved in a budget." Mr. Kelleher, when he was on council for two years, raised taxes, two percent and then ten percent, and he's failed to establish accountability. He's friendly with the manager. He doesn't know the difference between his role as a county councilman and his, and the manager's role as the chief executive. Accountability is what my top priority is, and we need a board of commissioners that's going to hold the manager accountable and get rid of him.
Okay, Mr. Urban, thank you. And now Tim McGinley, the same question. Your top priority if elected?
Thank you. After hearing all the different commentary from all the different candidates, I think there are a lot of great ideas. I think the one thing that maybe be able to start a lot of these ideas would be cooperation among the council. In order for us to move ahead, we have to get together, work out our differences, and decide what goals and implementation plans we want to proceed with. Certainly, the budget and the deficit are two things that we must address. There's no question about that. Our revenue sources are limited. We've got to look for different revenue sources so they don't rely so much on the property tax. We have to expand our horizons in that manner. We have to begin to start anew and start with a fresh and open and honest look at everything. That's very important. Many times, we have seen that people have come to us and are part of the council possibly with their own ideas, own agendas, and unfortunately, openness, transparency, and truthfulness were more important. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McGinley, thank you.
I just have a question. If we're going to mention one another's names in questions that don't deal with one another's names, do we get a chance to respond? My name was mentioned.
Well, we do have a format. Why don't we say from here on in, let's stick to the questions on the issues, and then we won't have that problem to deal with.
It's fine with me.
Do you agree with that? Is that okay with the lead?
I can.
We're, you know, we are trying to make this, or we have, the format is to answer these questions that everyone has a chance to answer without making a personal attack or bringing up someone else's record, because quite frankly, we don't have the time to analyze a point-counterpoint. This is not a debate. It's just a public forum, so if we can agree to that, that'll be good. It'll be a good thing.
Is that a personal attack?
So we're going to try and keep control, okay?
Have a personal attack from one end to the other.
Well, what we're going to do from here on in...
I disagree with you. It's a matter of a record.
It's a matter of a record. It's a matter of a tax. We need to know that.
We have a format. We're going to stick with the format. With all due respect to everybody involved, this is not a debate. These are forums with questions, and I think, quite honestly, when people see this, we're in the question number one, and we're already getting into controversy. I can't give my opinion. I could just say that's a fact. I think we can all agree with that. So if we can agree with, we're not making a personal attack at this point, we're not going to make it, we'll stick to the format. We all knew the format coming in. Let's stick with the format. The format's not a surprise, so I would like to say again, if somebody mentions somebody else, we're not going to have a personal attack or bring up somebody's previous record. I think at this point, it's a forum to answer these questions. We in agreeance with that? Agreement?
Sure.
Okay. Question number two, we start with Gene. Mr. Kelleher, the question is, what in your background makes you a good candidate for county council?
I've worked with a lot of people, so I think I can work in a manner that was described by Mr. McGinley, and that method is to try to look for the issue and vote on what is the correct response to how to deal with the issue. If someone has a good idea, it doesn't matter who the person is, it matters what the quality of the idea is. I was someone, by the way, when I was on council, in a public meeting says, said, and I didn't only, I only served two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and in those years, the first year the county manager did not make up the budget, the second he did, and then I was gone, but I said in two thousand and thirteen, if the manager does not do his job, that manager should be fired. I still feel that way, and I'm very concerned about how our budget is sixteen-point-whatever million short and how we're going to make that up and then have a balanced budget. And if the man who is the manager can't do that, then we need to replace him and get someone else.
Okay, Mr. Keller, thank you. Mark Raibro, what in your background makes you a good candidate for county council?
Well, first off, I run a small business, and I know what it takes to run a small business, and also what it's like to, for people that, my colleagues that I've known and in town and all throughout Luzerne County that run small businesses face, as well as being on the Redevelopment Authority and also being, going to every, pretty much every meeting I could, local, county, state meeting for almost three years. I know by talking to officials, by talking to the people that it affects, the policy that it affects, I think that I can be a bridge between the officials and the people and how it would actually benefit, how the people can work together with the official to make the policy better and actually bring more development and help the finances of the county. As well as, I work with the council members too. I go to the meetings, I talk to them, I talk to every single council member. It doesn't matter who they are, what their idea is, I hear them out, I exchange, I have exchanges with them, and they're respectful, and I actually think that some of the times they hear me, some of the times they don't hear me. But I think when you need something implemented, you need a seat at the table, and that's why I'm running, and I think that I could be of a great help to the people of this county as a next county council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raibro. And now, Mr. Gustaf, what in your background makes you a good candidate for county council?
As I stated in my opening remarks, I was a contracting officer at the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and I was involved in the budget office and the formulation and execution of the budget. It was a rather large budget, and it was declining over a number of years that I was there, and I know how to make budget reductions. The, another thing in my background is I was, for several years, I was the West Wyoming Borough Manager, so I was responsible for the day-to-day operations in the borough. That was at a time after the borough had been embezzled, and when I left, we were on sound financial ground. The, when I took over, we were one-hundred-sixty-five-thousand dollars of unpaid bills and had thirty-five dollars in a checkbook. I regularly attend council meetings. I speak at the council meetings, provide my views, and I speak to various council members afterwards regarding those views, and as Mr. Raibro said, you need a seat at the table enough in order to make any kind of meaningful improvements within the county, because three minutes as speaking in the public comment period is just not enough to make your point. Also, before I move back to the area, I lived in Virginia. I was a community activist for over thirty years, deeply involved in community affairs, working with our local politicians. So I think that makes me very qualified for a seat on the county council. Thank you.
Mr. Gustaf, thank you. Steve Urban, what in your background makes you a good candidate for council?
I think one item is, is that I have a lot of corporate business experience, which, you know, you have to have a sense of frugality and efficiency when you work in a corporate environment, to bring that into the county, to adopt sort of processes and practices that dollars aren't unlimited. At one point, I thought I was a good bridge builder. Obviously, some people probably beg to differ at times, because we have some differences in philosophies on how to move the county forward, and you're going to have that with eleven members on council. I still think I am a good bridge builder and a good listener. I do pay attention to details whenever we do have items in front of us to vote on. I make sure that I look them over, and quite honestly, I've found some material mistakes in the agenda items at times and pointed them out, you know, and sometimes when you see the county manager next to us, you know, he will look huffy and puffy when you point out a mistake, and that should not be the case. Everybody makes a mistake, but at least just fix it, get it right, and make sure everything that you present to council is accurate. I am a person that will ask tough questions, and I expect answers as a councilman. I don't want to keep hounding somebody that's supposed to be in a professional work environment to provide those answers. I think we owe it to the people to be open and transparent, and I will always fight for those people and fight for everybody and the taxpayers to get those answers for you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Jane Walsh Wakus, what in your background makes you a good candidate for county council?
Yes, thank you. Well, I have varied experience. Previous to moving back to the Wyoming Valley, I lived in the District of Columbia, became very, very active in community service in my neighborhood on Capitol Hill. We worked very, very closely with the police department and became members of the advisory board for the city council. I also have small business experience. I'm a former owner of a real estate business. I sold real estate, I negotiated contracts, I did appraisals, I supervised the staff, I met payroll, I balanced budgets. I know what it's like to look at the bottom line and try to find out not only how to pay bills, but how to make profit, and I think that would be very valuable in county, serving county council. When I was a member of Laughlin Borough Council, I had to balance the budget, and I had to provide services, and I had to listen to the taxpayers, and I willingly listened to taxpayers. They often appeared at my front porch, because they knew what time I came from work, and I listened to them, and I was happy to listen to them. So I am happy to bring all of that to county council.
Thank you. Robert Schnee, what in your background makes you a good candidate for county council?
I would say my six years on the Hazelton Area School Board, where we dealt with budgets of over ninety-million dollars, negotiated contracts that were fair to the taxpayer and to the working person. During that tenure, we went through a thirty-million-dollar building project. At the end, in nineteen ninety-nine, when I left the board, there was thirteen-million dollars in the reserve. So I think not only myself, the nine other members on that board did a great job to go through that kind of project and leave that much in the reserve, so I'm not, one out of nine. The other people deserve a lot of credit, and that's going across the aisle, whether you're a majority or a minority, as what brought up. Some people have some good ideas, whether it be Mr. Urban or Mr. McGinley, and I'll tell you by myself, I'm a registered Democrat that went on the Republican side. I am not voting, I'm voting on the issue. I'm not voting because Democrats vote one way and Republicans vote another way. People don't want that anymore in government. They want what's right for the people. I'm here to do what's right for the people, not for the Republicans or the Democrats.
Okay, Mr. Schnee, thank you. Stephen A. Urban, what in your background makes you a good candidate?
First of all, I think I have a wealth of experience in the county. Twelve years as a county commissioner, I know details about county government and about county spending, and then four years on county council. I pointed out to the manager when he spent millions more than was appropriated by council that, you know, there's seven million dollars that we're going to get from the baseball team if we fight for it. We had a meeting in the spring with some negotiators, and they were only offering us three, and I said, "No, we need to go after the full seven that's owed to us." I mentioned the TIF, the Taxpayer Incremental Financing for the Coal Street Project. There's millions of dollars that's owed to Luzerne County, and finally, after four years, the council took a vote to terminate the TIF, and that money will come back to the county. I fought, when I was a commissioner, for flood and disaster relief. I prepared a letter and personally handed it to the Vice President of the United States and Senator Casey and Senator Toomey and our congressional members, and they provided Luzerne County with fifteen-million dollars in disaster assistance that went out to West Pittston and went around the county for purchasing of houses and buying them out, and hopefully we'll take that train bridge down that crosses Exeter. So I know how to fight for the people of this county, and that's what I do. I care about the people of this county. I'll fight for the people of this county, and I can say this, it's not about civility on the council. We're going to have heated arguments, we're going to have heated debates. It's about accountability, holding a manager accountable and doing our job as county council members. That's what it is. We're legislative members, not executive members. Thank you.
Mr. Urban, thank you. Now, Mr. McGinley, what in your background makes you a good candidate for county council?
Thank you, Andy. Obviously, I've served now three, in about three-quarters years as a member of county council. Obviously, it's helped me be prepared to move into another election cycle. I believe that my experiences prior to that as the Director of Administration with the Commission on Economic Opportunity, where I worked with all types of finances, contracts, insurance issues, many other executive type of decision-making, have also prepared me. I have spent many hours outside of the normal day to learn the functions and operations of the county. of the county. I have done that on my own time, at my own expense. And I spent those hours because I wanted to know the details, the operation, how things work, what we could look at, what responsibilities we had and where we could make changes that would beneficial to our county and to our residents. It's my dedication, I believe, that's helped me become a better council member and I appreciate everyone's efforts to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. And finally, Mark Dixon, what in your background makes you a good candidate for county council?
Thank you, Andy. Well, you know, every day in my job, I deal with difficult situations, contract negotiations. We have accounts that are profitable, not profitable and, you know, that's what I do every day is look at that, how can we make that account? You know, how can we save money? How can we generate more money with those? I am a very reasonable person. You know, I work every day negotiating, talking about things and trying to come to a consensus with other people. I'm also very fortunate to travel with my job somewhat and I believe that that adds some value in going to other communities and seeing some of the, maybe the issues they've had or the improvements they've made in their communities. And hopefully I can bring some of those ideas to the area and bring some of those ideas to the table and just use my experience in the business world to help better Luzerne County.
Okay, Mr. Dixon, thank you. Question number three, we'll start now with Mark Rabo. The question is, and then all candidates will answer the same question, what should be done to reduce the large county debt? Mark?
Should be done is that we need to actually find where the overspending is and what actual departments and line items in the budget that, also through in the audit, that just came out where the overspending is. I've seen it in the corrections and judicial services. I've seen it for the past two years that it's been going on and I think those departments need to be looked at as well as others in identifying the overspending. I don't know where the department heads are, why they don't explain themselves or at least be brought out in the council meetings to explain as far as where, why they're overspending and where they're overspending and what their rationale is for it. I also wanted to know as far as the economic development goes, because I think that's the way to get more revenue to come in while we're cutting down on the spending. Because if you bring in more revenue and you cut down on the spending where you find it and actually as well as the money that's owed to the county in other areas such as the TIF, such as, and also prevent the giveaways of county property like Moon Lake and Valley Crest. I think those things all tie in at the end of the day to where it becomes a problem and you can't just run on, you can't just go on a gut feeling. You have to go based on the facts that are presented by the auditors and also the department heads. All right, thank you very much.
We're just trying to stick to a format. Thank you, sir. Ray Gustaf, the question is, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
Thank you. As I mentioned before, I believe that the county needs to identify sources of revenue other than property taxes. Congressman Prisinski's idea of the 2% room tax is a good start. I think we need other ideas. The other thing that needs to be done is a top-to-bottom review of the county expenses. Identify where the fat is and eliminate it. Another thing too, that we've got to avoid making some of these, what I think are bad decisions, such as the sale of Valley Crest. Prior to the sale of Valley Crest, I suggested that the county refurbish part of the building and move the county records up there because the county currently has $1.45 million in its budget for a records retention center. It wouldn't have cost that much to refurbish part of Valley Crest and move all the records up there. The other thing that could be done is the building could have been incrementally refurbished and county offices gradually moved up to the Valley Crest site in order to establish Valley Crest as a Luzerne County government campus. I think ideas like that should be looked at, implemented, and I think they would go a long way towards reducing the debt because right now, we spend millions in rental leases for properties to house county offices.
Okay, Mr. Gustaf, thank you. Thank you. Steve Urban, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
In order to reduce the large county debt, I think first of all, once again, it starts with leadership. You need good leadership and good division heads in all areas of the county government. When we get division heads in at times, what happens is they're ill-prepared, they don't come in with the right figures, they don't know the numbers. You know, you have 11 council members that come from various and vast backgrounds that will ask the tough questions. You know, how much are you spending? What are you doing? You know, even members of the public ask, how much is in a bank account? And they simply can't answer those questions that they should know. That's part of their job function. So, you know, as the legislative branch, we're there to check them, basically hold them accountable, hold their feet to the fire. And really, I think if we had good management in place, we wouldn't need all these consulting contracts. We should be able to put our own five-year plan together. The Director of Budget and Finance should be able to put the five-year plan together and not use somebody like a PFM that we pay tens of thousands of dollars to develop a five-year plan. That simply should be done in-house. Hire a CFO type of individual or CPA, not somebody that was an accountant at one point in time who got a director and budget and finance job and we're paying him a hefty salary. I think we need to look at all the heavy salaries that have been paid out to the newer individuals that are hired at the county. I think we're at a place where, you know, I'll use the word conundrum, where it's a very tough choice, we have a very tough choice of whether or not we want to raise taxes and provide raises for individuals or, you know, we need a top-to-bottom approach to look at every, every single expense line by line.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Urban. Jane Walsh Wakus, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
Well, you know, the obvious answer would be to cut, 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 but how much more can be cut? I mean, I agree with Mr. Urban about, for example, the consultants. I mean, there's really no reason to have to constantly hire consultants to do the work of professionals. When professionals are hired, they should be hired with the understanding that they're going to actually do the work. They're going to do the vision work, they're going to do the planning. They are going to be hired because they are the experts. Other than, other than cut, 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 how about exploring ways to create revenue? You know, we have county properties. Why cannot, why can't we get together and decide the highest and best use of the county properties? I mean, we have, we have people in Penn Place, we have people in the courthouse, we have people scattered about and that to me seems an awful waste of building space, having to heat the space and so on and so forth. Why not consolidate? But once again, we cannot forget that we have to explore ways of revenue. We have to. There's got to be ways to start whittling down the debt by using what we have now, but using it more wisely.
Thank you very much. Robert Schnee, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
Well, I agree with some of the individuals here. It has to start from the top down and that's with Mr. Lawton and, I mean, my hat's off to him, he's done some good things bringing us to where we could, our bond rating. On the negative, that's a positive, that we could go out and borrow money now. On the negative side, I think the audit and what's been going on in the county starts with leadership and evidently, he's not happy here because every job that comes up, he's applying for. So why are we keeping a person here that isn't here, doesn't want to be here in the first place? But I think it begins with having the audit on time so the 11 board members could look at real numbers and make judgments and go line item for line item and see if there's any waste. Refinance other outstanding bond issues since we have the bond rating now. Look at leases and rents that are extraordinary, that are sweetheart deals out there. I mean, the buck's got to stop.
Okay, Mr. Schnee, thank you. Stephen A. Urban, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
Well, first of all, we have the distinction between the long-term debt and the short-term debt that Mr. Lawton created. Number one, the long-term debt, we have a structural plan in place to pay that debt off through 2027. That, that's already in place. We know what those annual payments are going to be and most of those payments are fixed so they're not going to go up. But what we really need to focus on is the structural debt, the debt that Mr. Lawton has created, this $16.9 million that's been created over the past three years because of overspending. You know, $2.8 million of that money was because he didn't do the audits on time and JP Morgan Chase came in and basically increased a fee from $220,000 to $1.4 million on an annual basis. And the council never found out about the first increase and we found out about the second one when PFM came in and provided us with a briefing telling us that, you know, we had some financial issues and that bonds had to be refinanced. That's one issue. The other issue though is Representative Prisinski made a very good pitch for a 2% increase. I told him I supported that. The manager made at the same time a pitch to hire a deputy at $110,000 a year. I said no to that, we don't need another bloated job. The state has shortchanged us $500,000 in the district justice offices over the past 10 years. They've decreased the payment from $1.6 million to $1.1 million. And public defenders need to be funded by the state, not by the county. Most of the people that they defend are in violation of state law, not county law. So those are areas that we need to work with the legislature to make sure that we get money to the county that's owed us. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Urban, thank you. Mr. McGinley, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
Well, I'd like to address the long-term debt, which is the bond debt. This past year, the majority of council voted to refinance a very large sum, over $88 million worth of debt that was on a variable rate. We were able to obtain a fixed rate because we had successfully acquired a bond rating, the lowest bond rating, but was still a bond rating that the county had not attained in over 20 years. This allowed us to save somewhere between $3 and $4 million a year in debt service going forward. That's one step that has been taken. I think we should celebrate that part of it. There is some, still some variable rate bonds that could be addressed and again, that would lower our debt service. The most important thing though, I think, is to try to increase that bond rating. This would allow us, especially with our TAM, which is the tax, the tax anticipation note, which comes annually at the end of the year, we could save hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest if we could acquire a higher bond rating. And then probably the third and most importantly is maybe to come up with a reserve, to work on one-time fixes and put those into a reserve fund so we would not even have to ball on the TAM. If we could ever accomplish that, that would be major savings going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Mark Dixon, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
Thank you. Listen, I think what everybody's saying is, you know, a lot of people are saying cut, cut, cut and certainly, you know, we need to take a look at the spending and, you know, peel back the onion a little bit to see if there are areas where we can save, where we can be more efficient and are there services that are being provided by someone else that we could do that are less expensive and do those better. So that is one thing. I think you definitely have to do a bottoms-up review of the spending. In addition, you know, we've got to find other sources of revenue and it's not just continue to raise taxes. I think the 2% tax on hotels, it's a great idea, but are we doing enough to get those hotel rooms filled? Are we doing enough to promote the area, to get people into the area that are going to spend money and generate more revenue? So it is a review of where money's being spent, but it's also more revenue. We need that badly. Thank you.
Mark Dixon, thank you. And Eugene Keller, what should be done to reduce the large county debt?
Thank you. I think we need to look outside the box. There have been some wonderful suggestions mentioned here. I again want to reiterate the 2% idea of taxing that would be dedicated to debt reduction. That could be dedicated to that. Then we can take the short-term structural debt and get that out of the way. Pilot programs, there, according to the Times Leader, I have it in front of me, the county has 8,446 tax-exempt parcels. And I think we ought to talk to people, not order them, we can't do that, about pilot programs, payments in lieu of taxes. Tax assessors. Our tax assessors, we have one tax assessor for 33,000 parcels. If you look at counties of Burkes, Chester, Cumberland, Lancaster, Lehigh, they have one tax assessor for every 16,000 parcels. Are we missing situations where additions, changes, billings have been completed and they're not paying their fair share of the taxes? A simple idea like gas contracts. How do we miss not signing a contract with UGI? I talked to the gentleman in charge of that today and they could lock in the prices now while they're low in case they go high. So I think there's a lot of wonderful ideas here. All should be examined and used as opportunities to find ways to reduce the debt without, without increasing taxes.
Mr. Keller, thank you very much. We're going to go to audience questions and because of time constraints, I'm told we have time for one question and one audience question and the response will be one minute for each person, okay? The question is, and we'll start with Ray Gustaf on this one. The question is, should Luzerne County reexamine the role of the county manager?
Absolutely. The county manager has too much control over too many things. For example, he controls the budget, he controls the staff, he controls the contracting. I believe that the county should establish a CFO, Chief Financial Officer position. That way there, you would take the control of the finances off of the county manager, let him focus on the operations as opposed to the finances and you would also have this person to be able to keep the finances in check and keep the county manager from overspending and creating these deficits that he's creating.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gustaf. Steve Urban, should Luzerne County reexamine the role of the county manager?
I absolutely believe that we should reexamine the role of the county manager. I think him being appointed indefinitely, it does a disservice to our county and you need a supermajority in order to terminate him should he decide to do his own thing, which he pretty much has in the last three and a half years. I think that position probably should go back to the people and become an elected position. I would support a charter change, making that an elected position versus an appointed position. I would respectfully agree with Mr. Gustaf too and have to say that we should get somebody in there that is at least a CPA or higher. I don't know if we really want to call him a CFO because that would be associated with a high-paying job. Quite honestly, we have many, many issues that we need to overcome and really, the manager is the sole reason that we have a lot of issues today.
Mr. Urban, thank you. Jane Walsh Wakus, the question again is, should Luzerne County reexamine the role of county manager?
Yes, definitely. Luzerne County should. I agree with the idea that the county manager should be elected. I think the county manager should be in charge of operations. Right now, the county manager, his role seems to be in charge of everything. He's everything and I think, I totally agree with the idea of bringing in someone, I don't really care what the title is, but someone who can manage finances, who can be full-time finances, who can be our full-time financial person. But I totally agree, the people need to choose, to have a greater role in choosing who the county manager is, definitely. And I would support that.
Thank you very much. Robert Schnee, same question. Should Luzerne County reexamine the role of county manager?
I would say yes, that the manager's positions stay intact, but be reviewed each year by the 11 elected officials. And give the 11 elected officials year by the 11 elected officials. And give the 11 elected officials more say in what's going on financially and operation-wise in Luzern County. I guess you can't do that for two years to change the charter, but I think as elected officials, I mean, at the end of four years, your report card, either you get reelected or you don't get reelected by what you do. So I think in two years, the charter has to be tweaked, where you're giving the 11 people more pow, the power back from the people that put you in office. And the people that put you in office have the right to take you out of office then, if you're not doing the job. And yes, and thank you, I would.
Okay, Robert Schnee, thank you. Stephen A. Urban, should Luzern County reexamine the role of county manager?
Yes, they should, and the people will have the opportunity to examine the role of the county manager in January 2017. Home rule law does not allow a change to the home rule charter until five years after it's been in place. In January 2017, the people have an opportunity to either petition, or the council can vote to make that position an elected position, and I would vote to make an elected position if I was on council and not make the people go collect signatures. The manager has too much power, and the manager also keeps too much information from the county council. Not only financial information, but the information recently about children and youth. We read about it in the paper. The council should have been informed. Inspection reports about county activities go to the manager, not to the governing body, which is, which is us. He, he just has too much control and too much power, and the charter prohibits us from really interacting with him other than at, at county council meetings. That's the way I look at it. Thank you.
Mr. Urban, thank you. Tim McGinley, should Luzern County reexamine the role of county manager?
Well, obviously, as a seated member of council at the present time, I believe that there should be an opportunity, and the account, the charter allows for that opportunity very shortly, for us to review the role of county manager and make the changes that we feel are necessary. I do feel that after serving over, over three and a half years, that yes, there are areas that need to be adjusted, changed, revised. I do believe that the charter drafters did a great job in trying to put together a document to serve the Luzern County government, but many, much of that was then in a vacuum. And as we have seen the implementation of the charter and the government move forward, we've seen that there are some areas that need to be addressed, and I do believe that will be happening over the next year or a year and a half. And I think that will be a very important challenge for the new council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Mark Dixon, should Luzern County reexamine the role of county manager?
Well, I, I agree with everyone at the table. I think they should. I think it's important to take a look at that. You know, whether it's an elected position, a CFO, whatever you want to call it, I, I think further than that, there, there needs to be communication. And I, I think that that locks right now between the county manager and the county council. And, and without that, whoever you put in there, that there's going to be difficulty if you don't have an open line of communication. So I think that's something that's really lacking that's very important, but, but yes, I, I do believe they do need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keller, same question. Should Luzern County reexamine the role of county manager?
Needs to reexamine the role of the county manager and should adjust the home rule charter based on five years of experience. That's not a criticism of the people who wrote the charter, but after time and experience, you see things where you need, places where you need to make an adjustment. I agree with Mr. Gustav. I think I would prefer to see, respectfully, the county manager appointed, his role adjusted, and I'd like to see an independent auditor, whatever you want to call that position, where they report to the public and the people on how money is being spent, and that person is not subject to the county manager's authority. He's subject to reporting to the people and the council. So yes, I think that should be reexamined and adjusted.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mark Raabo, should Luzern County reexamine the role of county manager?
Absolutely. I think that the manager controls, like, most of the people, most of the candidates here, a lot of the, a lot of the things that councils should, some, some of the things councils should be doing, like the audit and the budget. It's, it's the county's audit and it's the county's budget, not, or council's budget, not the manager's budget. It's not the manager's audit. So I think that needs to be, and I agree with Mr. Gustav about the CFO. I would add that I would like to see the CFO answer to council rather than the manager, since the budget and finance person goes to the manager, reports to the manager. So I would like to see that CFO or independent auditor report to council and the people at a public meeting, so that way we know what's going on instead of being in the dark. And I believe that there are a lot of things that need, need to be adjusted in, in the charter, which need to be in 2017, and I hope that happens. And I would, I would be a part of it in any way that the people want me to. Thank you.
Okay, Mark Raabo, thank you very much. We're almost out of time. We're going to have our closing statements, remarks. We've also cut down, down to one minute. So one minute to say whatever you'd like to say, wrapping up tonight's forum. By my count, we start this round of closing with Steve Urban.
Thank you very much, Andy. Thank you.
Oh, this one, okay. Father's taking my thunder here. I want to thank the league once again, Andy, and the LCC for hosting this event. I respectfully ask for every voter out in Luzern County for your vote on November 3rd for reelection of, to county council. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. I think you need people that are in there that understand what's going on, not to basically go into this job not knowing what's going on. I mean, we already, some of us that are on council, we don't really get a lot of information now. So, but we do have some information. We are armed with that information. That information is power, and power for us to basically check this manager. We want to make sure that he's, his feet are held to the fire. He's accountable to you, your tax dollars, my tax dollars, and, and every voter out there and every resident in Luzern County. And I think some people have a misconception on, on what council is all about. There are things that are different within county government that are different than municipal government, state government, and federal government. So, you know, we know that distinction.
Stephen Urban, thank you very much. Jane Walsh-Wacus, your closing statement?
Thank you very much, and once again, thanks for listening to all of us. I'm here tonight to ask you for your vote. I am sincerely believing that I am an excellent candidate for county council. I am a really good negotiator. I've had experience negotiating. I am a bridge builder, and most importantly, I'm a good communicator. And I think those three qualities are very much needed at this time in county government. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane Walsh-Wacus. Now, Mr. Robert Schnee, your closing statement?
As I said earlier, when I was elected to the Hazlewood Area School Board, what a humbling experience that people put their trust in you. And at, at this time, I ask the people out there in Luzern County to put the same kind of trust in voting for me again, and I, I won't let it down. I mean, again, I was raised by two great parents. They taught me values of being a good person and doing what's right, and that's what I bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnee. Now, Stephen A. Urban, your closing statement?
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, the league, for hearing us, and thank you for the audience for listening. First of all, I want to ask for your vote and support on November 3rd. I, I believe my experience is, speaks loudly for the accomplishments here in Luzern County. I can just say, as, as a county council member, I previously served as the chairman of the Flood Protection Authority, and as you remember, back in 2011, we had Tropical Storm Lee. There was some significant damage to the levee system. Over $2 million was, was, was fixed. All that money was, came from the federal government. It didn't cost the county anything. I have a lot, a wealth of knowledge here in the county that I can help other council members. I mentioned before, the baseball team, we're owed $7 million, and I'm going to push to make sure we get that $7 million. I, I did not vote for Moon Lake Park. Moon Lake Park has a $30 million debt on the park. I did not vote to give that park away because I thought it was foolish. We don't give something away when there's a debt on it. Again, it's, it's about experience, and it's about a care and a passion for the people of this county, and that's what I have. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Stephen A. Urban. Now, Tim McGinley, your closing statement?
Thank you to everyone out there tonight, the audience, the league, community college. Andy did a great job. We appreciate that. Obviously, I'm asking for your support again. I've dedicated myself to try to do the best, make the best decisions for the county, make the best decisions for residents. None of the decisions are easy. They're all tough decisions. I work at it. I put my time in. I analyze it. I try to do the best that I believe is in the best interest of the citizens of Luzern County. Without a doubt, I am here. I'm here because I want what's right for Luzern County, the residents of today, and the future of tomorrow, and I appreciate your support on November 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Tim McGinley. And now, Mark Dixon, your closing statement?
Thank you, Andy, and thanks to the league. You know, this is a different opportunity for me, and, and I hope that what I can bring to the table is a different outlook and some business experience that I have. And I really believe that I can bring some out-of-the-box thinking to, to the county council. I know there's a lot of hard work ahead of them, whoever gets elected, but, you know, that's what I do. I'm, I'm a hard-working person, very dedicated. I deal with difficult situations every day, and, you know, I, I would ask for your vote on November 3rd. So, and thank you again for everyone being here. Thank you.
Okay, Mark Dixon, thank you. Gene Keller, your closing statement?
Yes, I've been in contract for 40 years with the same woman. It's the best decision I ever made in my life. Forty years of happy marriage. Unfortunately, she said the number that she mentioned wasn't 40. I ask for your vote. I would like to serve the people. There's been some wonderful ideas mentioned up here, but the one that impresses me the most of all, of all the good ideas, is Mrs. Wacus' idea, we've got to be bridge builders. We've got to work together. We've got to discuss things. We agree, we can be, agree to be, disagree without being disagreeable. So I ask for your vote, so I can serve the people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gene Keller. Mark Raabo, your closing statement?
Yes, I'd like to thank the league, Luzern County Community College, Andy, for moderating, and the audience for coming out tonight, and the, and the other candidates. I'm running not for myself. I'm running for the people, and I've attended the meetings for almost three years because I truly care about the people and the future of my county that I call home. And I think that's why all of you are out there, because you, you consider this your home, and that's why you want to, you want to fight for, you want the, you care about the survival of, of the county as much as I do and we all do up here. So I think that we need to work together and build this county to where we can actually leave it off to our kids and grandkids better than we had it. And I ask for your support and your vote on November 3rd, because together we can get out of any dark hour that faces this county. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mark Raabo, thank you very much. And finally, your closing statement, Ray Gustav.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you for the league for holding this forum tonight. Regarding the funding sources, over a year and a half ago, a woman made a presentation to the council alleging that there were properties in the county that were not on the tax rolls. I think the council must ensure that there is an independent review of the county properties to identify those properties not on the tax rolls and get them there. Also, I believe that the council could benefit greatly from, by having someone with my contracts and budgeting experience on the council. And also, I would ask that the voters examine the qualifications of all of the candidates for county council, evaluate them, make an independent determination of who they believe is the best qualified, and vote for those people. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gustav, thank you. I'd like to thank again, Tim McGinley, Mark Dixon, Gene Keller, Mark Raabo, Ray Gustav, Steve Urban, Jane Walsh-Wacus, Robert Schnee, and Stephen A. Urban for taking part tonight. It was my honor and pleasure to take part, and I think we're all here because we want a better Luzern County. So whether we agree or disagree, we want a better county. I'll give a round of applause to the candidates. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters of the Wilkes-Barre area and Luzern County Community College for hosting the event. And again, those of you at home watching, get out, let your voice be heard. November 3rd, that's what it's all about. That's where your voice is heard, in the ballot box. I want to call up Christian League of Women Voters. And again, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you.
Please join me in a round of applause for Andy. Thank you, the audience, for taking time out of your busy schedules to come tonight and listen to the candidates, so that you can make more informed voting decisions. Thank you to LCC for hosting us and helping us plan this. A couple of reminders again, November 3rd, get out and vote. We're also doing the DA Forum. Again, that is October 29th, Thursday night, 7 o'clock, Wyoming Seminary, Buckingham Center for the Performing Arts. Please, please join us for that. Bring a couple of friends with you. Again, this forum will air on Service Electric Channel 2 on Monday at 8:00 p.m.